All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the town of Newbury zoning board of appeals. It is Thursday, January 19th, 2023, 7:30. And we're going to open the meeting. I have here, up here, say we have Chrissy Gilfree, who's our administrative assistant. We have Michelle Huedler, who's an associate member to my right. I'm Eric Spahn, I'm the chair. We have Jack Kelly, who's a member. Then we have Mario Vamwali, who's a member. And Larry Murphy, who's our liaison for the planning board. With that, let's open the meeting. Your doctor, enter the first hearing, please.
Public hearing continued. Al Ward, 80 Northern Boulevard. The applicant is requesting a special permit finding for relief of section 97-4D5C02, upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as it may be required on the town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project in order to renovate the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on the lot with an increase in height on the property located at 80 Northern Boulevard, Newbury, Mass., Cessna 703 lot 181. And this is continued from December 15th.
All righty. Johnson, your.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening and happy new year. Douglas DeShane from Finnerland Nicholson, representing Al Ward, who is seated here with me, as well as attorney Colleen Hayes from my office. So here we are again in what's turned out to be a multi-year permitting process. You know, what initially seemed to be a straightforward upward extension special permit seems to have turned into a very complicated situation and as a result, we have had to have multiple hearings on the application. I do appreciate the board's time and efforts. My client has been asked over the course of these hearings to respond to a number of allegations from our neighbors and questions from our neighbors, as well as concerns and requests from the board. As you'll recall, we've started as simply as, is the house a one family or is it a two? How many bedrooms are there really? Are we increasing the bedroom count or are we not? The past rental practices of the previous owner and those of my client have been called into question. Issues concerning the structural integrity of the structure and the foundation and whether it constitutes one structure have raised. The question with regard to whether we comply with the 50% rule for the flood regulations has been raised and addressed. And then we've, there've been questions raised about whether my clients or client or past owners have had detrimental impacts to the dunes and whether they violated Wetland Protection Act issues. The question of the legality of the garage itself has been raised. And lastly, as you all know, we have had this very interesting question concerning the encroachment of the existing garage onto the property next door. While a number of these allegations and issues, in my opinion, are not legally related directly to the special permit application, my client and I do respect the fact that the board has to make a determination of whether or not this proposed addition is going to have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. So clearly, you're in your right in wanting to have a full understanding of this situation and what it's going to mean to the neighborhood and what's gone on in the past versus what will go on in the future. And in fact, we all know it's your job to determine if the addition will be inconsistent with the neighborhood and whether it will have significant detrimental impacts. So we have made every attempt to address those various issues, as you know, and these issues and the answers to them have not only been generated by myself, but they've, in many cases, been resolved or answered in consultation with the building inspector or in the case of the board with town council. So, you know, we've had to look and get opinions from some of this stuff. So, as I went through the checklist, I believe we have all reached an understanding or conclusion that the house is not and will never be a two-family home. It currently has four bedrooms. We are proposing to move one bedroom and eliminate a bedroom, you know, by placement of the staircase there. We are not adding a fifth bedroom. While it's been determined that the previous owners most likely rented the, you know, a portion of the house as a separate unit, or maybe both portions as two separate units, I think we've provided significant evidence that my client has never done that. While they have rented the house as a whole, they've never rented a portion of it individually. And as we've committed to this board many times, he has no intention of doing that in the future. And I believe at least at one point, we proposed a condition if the board found it fit to issue the permit that, you know, just put it on notice that this is not allowed to happen. So, and then we've, we talked about the integrity of the building and the 50% rule. My client had addressed both of those with the building inspector before applying and they came to an agreement or the building inspector agreed that we would not be in violation of the 50% rule based on what he was proposing and with an assumption that, you know, he wouldn't have to redo a foundation or anything else. And so while I don't necessarily feel it's in the purview of this board to ask those questions, we did again, address them with the building inspector. And the bottom line there is if we are giving a permit, when my client goes to request a building permit, the building inspector will once again analyze whether, you know, we're going to do more than 50%, you know, because the foundation's not bad or something like that. If that's the case, it's my client's risk that he won't be able to exercise the special permit and, you know, we might have to come back. But that is his risk and that's the risk that all applicants to this board take. When the building inspector makes an initial determination that you don't exceed the 50% rule, you know, things change and you do, well, you're going to, you're going to find out down the road. So I think that, at least in my mind, that issue was addressed. We have shown pictures of the dunes as they were when my client bought the property and how they are today, and I think that shows that the dunes have actually raised, you know, come up and that grass has done well there. We also touched base with conservation commission with respect to my client removing sand from the, from the house, you know, after a storm. And, you know, there is not, there was not, it was not deemed to be a violation of the Wetland Protection Act. And then by virtue of showing that the garage was built well in excess of 10 years ago, as we all know, that garage is now deemed to be a legal, pre-existing, non-conforming structure for zoning purposes. So we've answered the question of whether the garage is legal. Last but not least, the encroachment issue, probably the most interesting of the issues. As you may know, and as I understand, the encroachment is not on a public street or a public way, but rather it's on a private right-of-way, which is owned by the abutters to that right-of-way, including a portion owned by my client. The law, the derelict fee statute, if it applies, and the fact that the property is owned by the abutters, says that they all own to the middle of the roadway over the length of their lot. And they own that subject to the right of everybody else that lives on it to pass and repass. And in this particular case, that right-of-way, there is an easement to the public to use it to access the beach. So it's not a public road, it's not a public way, but the town does have an easement over it. So in a way, they have an interest in the ownership. But technically, the ownership of that right-of-way lies with the abutters to the right-of-way. And again, you know, please be reminded that the building inspector in his early determination letter before we filed, found that the proposed addition, even though it was going to go, you know, over the encroachment, is not considered an exasperation of the nonconformance and that, you know, the only reason we needed the special permit was because we were proposing outward extension within the PIOD. In fact, if this house was located outside of the PIOD and it had the same kind of encroachment and everything else, we could do what we're proposing by building permit. But we are in the PIOD, so we are here. Nevertheless, my client has also agreed to a number of changes and commitments to help to alleviate some of the concerns of the neighbors and I know some of the board members. As we, as you know, we've proposed to remove the kitchenette in its entirety, so there'll be no further concern that it's a, you know, sort of standalone unit. We've proposed to remove a separate access and egress door that would allow you to enter that portion of the kitchenette and the house from its own, you know, its own private way. And again, the reason we're doing that is so that we eliminate this idea that it's a separate unit and that it's, you know, could be accessed as such. So we, my client really has made commitments that I think, I hope, will alleviate the fears of the neighborhood in terms of his future renting. We have also discussed accepting a condition if the board were to consider granting this of prohibiting a rental of any separate portion of the home. I'm not saying that we would agree to never rent the home. I mean, a lot of owners on Plum Island rent their home, but it would be the entirety of the home, none of this two-unit thing or anything like that. And, and probably the newest twist to all of this is in our latest filing with the board, which we made a week ago, my client provided you a sketch whereby he's proposed to move, to move the addition or pull the addition back from the encroachment area so that the entirety of the upward extension is over his lot. So we're not proposing to exasperate that encroachment, even though technically just going up isn't considered an exasperation, but, you know, on other planes, one could say that, well, if you make it taller, you're exacerbating the encroachment. So we don't want to exasperate the encroachment. We're pulling, we're proposing to pull it back some two feet, which would not only result in a reduction in the 545 square foot addition we proposed, but it also reduces our FAR and everything else. But most importantly, we are now proposing that the addition would be completely within the lot, so that we're not over that encroachment in any way. So what are we left with? In my position or my proposal to the board, we are left with a request for an upward extension to a pre-existing, non-conformer structure and asking to relocate an existing bedroom into a proposed 545 square foot addition, which does not exasperate any pre-existing nonconformities and does not create any new nonconformities. So another point is, as we previously discussed, although this addition, as I understand it, will increase the roof of the height of the garage itself from 13 feet 5 inches to 21 feet 2 inches, so just a little less than eight feet. When you look at the impact on the median height of the entire structure, which is what we're told to look at, we're raising that from 19.3 feet to the 21.2 feet, which is really a less than two-foot increase in the vertical extension of this building. However, even at that point, as you know, at 21.2 feet, we're still nearly 14 feet lower than the 35-foot allowed maximum height. So I don't think this is a significant increase in height relative to the allowance and the bylaw. So the question for the board at this point, I'll cut to the chase, is to determine, as per the PLID regulations and the zoning bylaw, whether or not the proposed addition is significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. And as part of that determination, is always an analysis of whether what's there today and what is proposed is consistent with both the neighborhood in general. So I'd like to move on to that. So in terms of whether the existing, whether the current and proposed conditions of the existing structure, which is non-conforming because of that dimensional side yard setback, is consistent or can be found within the neighborhood, is, you know, that is the question, right? So we did a little research and if you can refer to that first plan. We took a look at our neighborhood in general. And we all are well aware that there are numerous examples of side yard setback, front yard setback, all setbacks being violated throughout Plum Island. In fact, you know, I'm finding there's probably more that have violations or nonconformities than don't. So we looked at the approximately 30 homes directly affecting our properties. You can see we've provided the ward home there in the center in yellow. And the red lines represent violations of the, you know, setbacks, both side and front yard. And as you can see, more than 16 of the 30 homes currently are non-conforming as to setbacks. And in fact, at least one property, this one here, is shown to actually be within the right-of-way. All of these other homes, you know, we don't have 10 feet here, we don't have 10 feet here, we don't have 10 feet here, you don't have 20 here. So you know what I mean? These lines are showing, in fact, the house directly across from us is non-conforming as to front yard setback. So when you ask if whether the current condition of our home, which is this, you know, nonconformity here, is a condition that's found throughout the neighborhood and whether what's there when we're done is shown to be without the neighborhood, I would submit that more than half of the homes surrounding us, in fact, have the same nonconformity that we do. So I think it's unquestionable that many, if not most, of the houses in the neighborhood have nonconformities as to dimensional setbacks. And again, including at least one that's on the public way. So we're not standing out here and we are certainly consistent with what we see today. Whereas we are not increasing or exasperating our nonconformity, my clients will continue to be consistent with the neighborhood. So now, moving to the question of whether or not the proposed addition is significantly more detrimental to the PIOD in the neighborhood, we must first consider some facts relative to our site specifically. If you could jump to that next, I'll come back to this one. So the criteria for the special permit. One, the existing structure is located on the largest lot in the neighborhood. And if you flip back to that plan, which I've given you a copy of, you will see, we are the biggest lot in the neighborhood, or a double lot, I guess people refer to it. But I think that's important, that we are the largest lot in the neighborhood. And our structure is actually located a relatively significant distance from its abutters. Could you go back now to that other, other thing? Here we go. So what I did is I just roughly scaled out the distances from our proposed addition to our neighbors. And you can see we're 38 feet from the closest neighbor, which is on the other side of the right-of-way. We're about 70 feet from the front door of our neighbor across the street. And we're over 120 feet from the neighbor over here. Our house, if you look at these, or excuse me, my client's home, if you look at these, you can see we actually have some of the biggest separations from our neighbors in the neighborhood. I mean, you can see there are, you know, there's a significant one here and here and this one's good there, but it's, you know, pretty close to the other neighbors. But if you look around here, you know, there's very rare, it's very rare to find that there's more than 20 or 30 feet between the homes. So us being 120, the addition being 120 feet from this home and the addition being 40 from 38 from here and 70 from there, I mean, shows the fact that we're not dense here. Our lot, given the fact that we have the largest lot, we're not dense here. We're not crowding our neighbors and this addition won't do that as well. So, can we go back to the criteria, please? So, as I said, we're on the largest lot in the neighborhood and we sit relatively significant distance from our bodies, especially compared to the other homes in the neighborhood. The addition will not exasperate the existing nonconformity or create any new nonconformities. We're not increasing any bedrooms in the home. The structure of the proposed admission meets by considerable measure all FAR, lot coverage, and height restrictions. And I say by considerable measure, we're actually only going to just around 16% on the FAR where 20, 25, or 25 is allowed. Our lot coverage is even much reduced and it's, you know, we have the ability to go to 20%. We're far below that. And again, we're 14 feet below the height limitation. So structure certainly meets all of those requirements and again, by considerable amount. The nonconforming conditions of the existing and the proposed structures, as I just talked about, are found in more than half of the structures within our neighborhoods. So we are not proposing, we are not existing or proposing to be out of line with the conditions surrounding us. As such, if you take all of these into consideration, we're certainly not going to exasperate any conditions that affect the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of Newbury. And really, I try to think of what, how this, you know, 500-plus square foot addition on this property located on a big lot and separated from its neighbors would affect that. We're not going to affect the ability to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, or other dangers. That's one of your standards in your bylaw. This addition's not going to have any impact on anybody's ability to get out of the way of a fire, a flood, a panic, or any other dangers. We're not negatively impacting the provision of adequate light or air to the neighboring properties. Closest neighboring property is 38 feet. The others are 70 and over 120. So we're not going to have any impact on the light or air to their properties in any way. We will not create overcrowding or undue concentration of population. Overcrowding is addressed by FAR. We're well below your FAR. Concentration of population, this was a four-bedroom home when we started, it will be a four-bedroom home when we're done, and it's a home that sits on the biggest lot in the neighborhood. So we're not going to be increasing the population of the lot or the, create any kind of overcrowding. We will not negatively impact the adequate provision of transportation, water, water supply, drainage, sewage, schools, parks, open space, or other public requirements. This addition is going to have little to no impact at all on public services. You know, again, if we were a four-bedroom, it's still going to be a four-bedroom. Water and sewer, we had water and sewer for it, we're going to have same water and sewer, but not be in any way increasing it. And we're certainly not going to have any impacts on, you know, drainage, sewage, schools, or anything like that. We will not impact the town's access to the beach over the right-of-way. There is an encroachment there now, pre-existing, nonconforming, but our addition, especially where we've now pulled it into our property, is not going to make it harder for people to get to the beach. They're still going to get there the same way they have for, you know, decades. We will conserve the value of the land and the buildings, including the conservation of natural resources and the prevention of light and pollution. This addition will certainly increase the value and the aesthetics of my client's property. Therefore, as we've seen, it will help to support and increase the value of our neighbors. It will preserve and increase taxes for the town of Newbury. And from, in terms of conservation of natural resources, we are not proposing to touch the dune in any way. We are not proposing to expand the footprint of the property. And we have already talked with the conservation commission, and while we will have to go get an order of conditions, because you have to, if you're doing anything in the dunes, the fact that we're not physically touching the dunes, conservation commission is implied, you know, that is a permit that will be at least reasonably received because, you know, we're not proposing to increase footprint or make any new impervious. So this addition certainly will preserve the value of the natural resources and the prevention of light and pollution. So Colleen, if you're to the next slide. So in summary, you know, I think if we take away all of these other issues and questions we've talked about concerning rental history and the garage legality and the, you know, whether it's a one or a two family and the bedrooms, you know, they were all good questions. They were all questions that were, you know, allowed to be asked and we've done everything we can to answer them. But when you strip those away, we are looking for a special permit to, for an upward extension. That's it. And as I said, but for that, we wouldn't even need, but for being on Plum Island, we wouldn't need this at all. So the existing condition of the home, nonconforming as a dimensional setback, is not only found within our neighborhood, but in fact, is found in a majority of the 32 homes that I pointed out to you. As such, the proposed addition will not exasperate, exacerbate any conditions that affect health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood or the POID in general. The addition does not create any new conformities or exacerbate any existing nonconformities. The proposing addition and the resulting structure meets all FAR, lot coverage, and height limitations by sizable measure. So that therefore leads me to my last statement, which is the proposed addition will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighbors or the PIOD. Happy to answer any questions that we may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, any questions? Take a minute, I'll ask for it.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any, the board doesn't have any questions at this moment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the project? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak against the board?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Jeff Roloff. I represent Tim and Anna Dross, who live at or own the property at 76 North Boulevard, immediately to the south of this property. We discussed this project back in November. I just want to remind the board, I did submit a letter on November 17th as well, raising a number of issues that we discussed at that last hearing. I disagree with the contention that most or most or all of those issues have been addressed. Of the issues that we raised there, this substantial improvement issue continues to be a big issue for us. And we've talked to the building inspector, his review was a very preliminary review. He accepted the numbers that were provided to him. There was no support for the cost estimates. We still haven't received, these plans don't provide any details about the foundation, either that's there currently or that's proposed to be done. So we're confident that down the road, once that issue gets reviewed in earnest, this is going to be a completely different project, which is why we urge the board to wait for that to happen. I understand the point that they're the ones taking the risk, that's fine, but we're going to be watchdog in that process and I'm very confident we're going to be back in front of you with a completely different project because this renovation should be done, just like the Dross renovation work had to be done pursuant to the code. And just like they were told, if they're going to do something to this part of the building, they're going to have to put it on pilings, et cetera. Okay. I'm not going to get back into those issues. At that hearing, you asked us to submit any additional comments by December 8th, prior to December 15th hearing, and we did that. And in the meantime, we did some additional research, which really helped us to sort of refine some of our issues. And we've addressed those in our December 8th letter to the ZBA. And I want to get to those issues. There are two issues there. The first one goes to the special permit criteria. We disagree, we are, in our view, for the reasons that we articulated and discussed in that letter, we do think this expansion is going to result in, be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Our concerns are not just the aesthetics of it and the blocking of the views, but also just the increase in capacity. The real issue I want to get to in my presentation right now is the second issue. And it's one that hasn't been addressed or really even discussed. And it's a, it's a sort of refinement of the concerns we raised about this living area within the garage structure. So previously, we had articulated that, in our view, as basically being a second independent living space. It makes this building a two-family building. And looking at it more closely, though, the issue is actually worse than that. So the reality is that that space has been used So, the reality is that that space has been used illegally, illegally since it's been built. We agree that the structure itself has the benefit of becoming a, now becoming a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming structure due to the passage of time. That kind of grandfathering benefit doesn't go to the use. So, the historic use of this space behind the garage structure as a bedroom, or as a, let's say, as an accessory unit, it was rented out previously by the other owner, at least as an accessory unit, but even as a bedroom, was illegal when it was started and is illegal today. There was never a permit issued for it. Back in 2000, back in 2020, two years ago, the applicant came before the board at that time proposing to demolish the house and build a new one. In the application materials, and we quote this in our December 8th letter, they specifically said in their application that the house, the original structure has four bedrooms, and there's a fifth bedroom behind the garage. So, two years ago, what they were saying is, we've got five bedrooms here. The assessor's card has reported then and now four bedrooms. The four bedrooms that are referenced in the assessor's card are the four bedrooms that were in the original structure. They may have renovated it, so maybe it's three now, I don't know, but the assessor's card never acknowledged the fifth bedroom in the garage. And the reason I highlight that is because that bedroom is not a legal use of the space, just like using it as a second family or accessory apartment is not a legal use. So, then that brings us to the PIOD provisions. You know, you, basically what they're saying is, we've got a bedroom in the garage, it's an illegal bedroom, but we want to expand it, and we want to relocate it. So, we're not adding a bedroom, we're just relocating the one we have. The one they have is illegal, it shouldn't be there. There is no grandfathering protection for the bedroom use of the space, or, for that matter, the use of this space for any living purpose. There was no building permit issued for it. Obviously, there's safety concerns. If somebody were, if the building inspector were to go in there and inspect it to see whether it meets the code requirements for a living space, I'm confident he would conclude that it doesn't. So, as you know, under the PIOD provisions, the ZBA is not allowed to issue approval for renovations that result in the addition of a bedroom, unless the building you're dealing with is a one- or two-bedroom unit, and then you've got a three-bedroom maximum. In this case, there are already four bedrooms in the original structure, or even if there are three, by allowing this expansion, you're effectively allowing a fourth bedroom, because the one, the one that is there shouldn't be there. So, in the end, even if you're inclined to agree with their view that the expansion meets the special permit criteria, even if you're inclined to conclude that the expansion doesn't result in an exacerbation of the problems, you don't have the legal authority, you don't have the legal authority to approve this renovation, because the effect of it is to allow the continuation and the expansion of an illegal bedroom. It's adding a bedroom to the structure. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? In favor or against the project?
Just take a couple minutes. So, I would...
Okay, I'm going to address the question.
Tim Dross, I own 76 Northern Boulevard, right next to a proposed project. So, first, I'd like to thank everybody on the board. I know you've been really patient last time, we spoke a lot, and I just want to take a couple minutes, so thank you for that. I would tell you, as our attorney pointed out, we're never concerned or have any issue with Mr. Ward expanding this house or doing whatever he needs to do, and we've beat up the, what the issue is. The bedroom's illegal. It's a two-family, whatever he uses it for, it's a, it's never, it never was permitted. It's not legal now, and it can't be made legal. It severely affects us. We have the exact same house as Mr. Ward, and we have a house, and we have a garage attached to a porch. And if I came in front of you, if I came in front of you and proposed that I'm going to expand my garage and add a bedroom, this hearing would be over in two minutes. Wouldn't be allowed, right? Because I don't, I have a three-bedroom house, and based on PIOD and what I have, I wouldn't be able to expand and add a bedroom above, it wouldn't even be a question. It's not possible. This is the same situation, because we have a structure, whether the garage was permitted at the time, we're guessing if it was or not, we're not sure, but we're positive that the bedroom wasn't. So, it's the same situation if I came in front of you of my own purpose and said, hey, I have a three, we have the exact same house with the exact same size lot. My lot actually has more space. My garage takes up less space. So, our square footage is extremely close to what Mr. Ward has. I have also a double lot. And when I was working on my house just a few years back, the only thing I did was raise the roof. We kept the structure exactly the same, but it had to go up on piers. Right? But if I touched that garage, one, it would have to go up on piers, two, it wouldn't be allowed for me to expand that garage because, to a bedroom, because I would be in violation of PIOD. This is exactly what he's asking you to do. It just happens that he has an illegal bedroom there that was never permitted, and now you want to try to make it legal. It's not legal, and it can't be determined to be legal at any point. And I would ask you, you know, for us, me and my wife and our family have a home. We spend a tremendous amount of money taking care of our home. We had, we've had, have spent a tremendous amount of money trying to protect our investment. We had to hire an attorney. We built a, we did follow every rule when we were renovating our house just a few years back, and we expect that the town would protect our investment in our home and allow, and hold everybody else to the same standard. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Shane might have something else, or?
Yeah. Do you have any?
No, I'm still processing, I do have a question or two, but...
Okay.
I do too, but I'll let Mr. Shane speak.
Just quickly, I'd just like to respond to those comments. First of all, the building inspector, as we were preparing to inspect this home, actually was invited out to the home by my client. He walked through the entire home. He inspected every room, including the bedroom off the garage.
Yeah. Why just, he went, how many piers did he make out to the site?
I'm just saying, in at least one occasion, he's been through the whole house.
In my discussions with the building inspector, he said he did a drive-up and it wasn't a full inspection.
That's, it's true. He doesn't, he didn't go through the whole house, but he was in the bedroom that...
It's a question.
Behind the garage, like we're doing stuff over, he did not go through the entire house.
Okay, so he did, he was in the bedroom, he did not find that it was illegal or that it was unoccupiable. And in fact, we just took a look at the assessor's card, and in fact, it does delineate the space behind the garage. It shows it as a space, a living space, part of the home. I'm just not sure where a conclusion is being made that we have an illegal situation. We all agree that the garage is, for all intents and purposes, under zoning, a pre-existing non-conforming structure, okay? It's in a residential zone, and so there doesn't have to be any additional approval to utilize that area for a bedroom. And the, I mean, the assessor, the building inspector, all the town records recognize this as a four-bedroom home. It's only the neighbors and their attorney that are saying, oh, no, it's a five-bedroom home, and it's illegal. That's not the case, and that's not what's before this board. What's before this board is a question of whether or not the physical addition of this building will be detrimental to their home, to the neighborhood. We're not asking to add another bedroom, and there's no basis to say that we're currently illegal. Again, building inspector, assessor's office has recognized us as a four-bedroom home. And the bed, building inspector knows that that room behind that garage is one of those rooms. So, I, I don't really know what to say, but certainly in granting a permit to add on to this structure, you're not in any way making an illegal situation more illegal or creating an illegal structure. So, I just, I just don't, not sure where that's coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board, there are some discussion points too, please.
I guess, I guess I'm hung up in the beginning, and Mr. Shane's just referenced it. The part that I'd like clarification on is when you look at the drawing or look at the building, it sure looks like two separate structures connected by a breezeway. And all the, I think all parties agreed that the breezeway is unheated and doesn't have a common wall with the main structure. So, it seems like in the very beginning, the building inspector might not have looked thoroughly enough. I don't want to say I disagree with the building inspector. I would like to say that perhaps we could get some more clarification on it to see if it actually is a de-stat, de-stat, detached, excuse me, detached structure, because if it is in fact a de-stat, detached structure, then I think we can argue that it does exacerbate the existing non-conforming conditions and make things more detrimental. So, I guess that's where, before we get to the questions of the gallery and all that stuff, which is sort of our purview, I think I'm sort of hung up on that initial determination.
Yeah, can you hold your questions, one second?
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Ruff, Attorney Ruff?
Oh, sorry, yeah, Roloff.
Oh, Roloff, I'm sorry.
No problem, yeah, yeah.
So, in this Exhibit A...
Yep.
Where was this found, and is this the correct date, 11/22, and who put this ad in?
That ad was found on that date online. Now, having heard the applicant and their counsel speak about it, I think what they're saying is, yeah, you can find that advertisement out there, but we haven't, it's not an active listing, we didn't post it.
Who posted?
Well, I think it had, I think what they're saying, maybe you can speak to that. I think what they're saying is, it was posted at one point, maybe by, maybe it was posted by the prior owners, but it's not a listing that this owner has kept active. It's not, even though it's dated November 2022, it wasn't an active listing of his at that time. I don't have any reason to doubt his explanation on that. It is possible that we found it because it's a remnant of some earlier listing, but at the very least, it goes to show that somebody at some point in time, maybe not Mr. Ward, maybe the predecessor, was actually listing this as a second unit, and the neighbors in their comment letters, who have been in this neighborhood forever, have also provided you with materials and comments confirming that historically, the reason it was built was to be a rental unit for the original owner. I mean, that was years ago, but the point is, it was built to be a second unit, it was never permitted for that, so it's an illegal, it was illegal then, and it's illegal now.
Okay, thank you.
If I could also address your question. We did provide to the board all of the information relating to that ad, and also we provided you a listing of the rental that actually...
Yeah, you saw that.
None of that occurred during my client's ownership.
So, this was a previous...
Yeah, and in fact, we went through the process of making sure that was pulled down, correct? You contacted the company and said, you know, what's going on here? In fact, you did get one phone call some time ago saying, I read your ad, and you know, I'm interested in your unit, and Al said, well, yeah, I rent my whole home, and they were like, no, we want to rent the, and that's when we found out that that was there, and you know, we, but we provided you...
No, I saw, I saw.
Evidence that it was never rented by my client.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure. I was trying to clarify, but in, what I'm saying is that at one point, this was considered, someone considered this a two-family, two different apartments.
Well, I think the owner at the time may have...
That's what I was on.
Or at least he, he can, he may not necessarily consider it a two-family home so much as he considered that he had a, a unit he could rent.
Yeah, it's just two, two apartments.
Right. So, but remember too, you know, my client has agreed to remove the kitchenette and that door so as to provide our neighbors, you know, comfort that, it's not going to happen, just not going to happen.
Okay, are you good?
Yeah, I think, similar to Jack, my thought always was, when I originally asked a couple meetings ago about that covered breezeway not being a heated space, so it's not habitable space, so you're essentially two structures at that point. You know, I could look at these plans and say, there's six bedrooms if I really wanted to, you know, I mean, that's not really for us, I guess, to judge how many bedrooms this house is. I could easily come up with six bedrooms in this floor plan, right? So, to me, it's more that it's, it feels like two structures to me.
Well, I can't...
If I just put my code on it, so...
I can't, I can't question your feelings or what you think, but, but why then has the town...
Well, it's not just my feeling, it's the, it's the, it's that that space is not habitable space, so legally, if it's not habitable, it's not connected legally by a habitable space, it's two separate...
I don't believe you have to have heat to be considered habitable.
It's just screens, right?
Yeah, of course you do.
It's just screens, right?
Yeah.
It's walk, it's walls, roofs, and...
Screens, but there's no windows, right? No glass windows? No?
No, but to say that the buildings aren't connected, I mean, I don't agree with that. They are connected, you can walk right through them. You can walk right through them.
Yes, but even in our accessory apartments, we've had layouts where, in terms of, quote, having a, under the accessory apartments, if you have apartment within, the idea is that you enter the home, and then, I mean, we've been through this before, and then there's a means to go to one to the other. And so, here, you enter the home without actually entering, you're entering the breezeway, and you have the means to go to two separate, it's not like you're passing through or you're not passing through one of the separated livable areas. So, in all accounts...
I'm sorry, I don't understand that.
I'll get your...
They get there on that.
I'll get back to my point.
Okay.
The lady in the back, would you like to speak, please?
I'm Harvey Karmann, I'm 75, New Little Mark, sitting right across the street. My concern is that they're removing the kitchen equipment, and they're putting a stairway in the current bedroom, so now we have a room up there, and now they're putting another, and my thought, that to me seems like we've got two bedrooms now behind the garage, one downstairs and one upstairs.
Don't note it, thank you. Okay. So, Doug, understanding that the arguments and the presentation of the application, and we've been through a lot, it's great, it's a double lot, it's, you know, you've got a great piece of property on Plum Island, it's extremely unfortunate that that garage addition was done, and it's obviously non-conforming when it was built, it doesn't meet the side yard setback at all, and, you know, and it wasn't done 100 years ago, it was done fairly recently in time, so it's unfortunate. With that, we've gone over bedrooms, and there is some question of whether a use is legally obtained, whether the assessor's card and the, how the town recognizes it and paying taxes on it, identifying it. The one to two, as we're just discussing now, that it is a, it, for all intents and purposes, looks like it's two separate units. You can go into one house and lock the door, and you can go in the other house and lock the door, and the two shall not, the two entities in those two spaces shall not meet each other, and shall not have access to each other, which means that they're, they're Understanding that, you know, even now, it's boarded up so that the screens aren't open to the winter weather, it does, it does appear that way. The rentals... The rentals from the past are unfortunate as well because they show a point of how the intent or how it could be used. And certainly, if conditions could be, could be made, you obviously recognize that it's, that it cannot be used as a two-family or rented as a two-family. But it does, it does look and smell like that when you look at the plan. And we can, we can argue that, continue that argument if we really want to. The 50% rule, as you said, will get to the building inspector and he can make a judgment call on his purview and his enforcement as he, as it is, is duty to do so. And then there's the proposed modification that you've asked for or created and submitted to us. So, great lot, unfortunate addition that not only encroaches on the side yard back, but totally overblows the property line by two feet. It's unfortunate that there's a paper right-of-way street that provides access to the beach, of which that structure is now on and encroaching on part of. The fact that the law says that a right-of-way is, and I don't know the full legality of it, other than asking town council whether the town had a stake or interest or... And if so, if they did, would they have the ability to grant or provide any relief to that right-of-way or access to that right-of-way or any easement held to it? And the point being that it's not hanged by the town so that there was no further discussion on that point. The fact that you, or the, I don't know, Larry, maybe you have the help, but this right-of-way that's on paper, that's actually on the neighbor's property, but said to be owned or accessible to both parties since it's a street and there's some sort of access to the midpoint of that, that way or that street that's on paper, but not...
That's a hard question to answer from the information you have. I mean, there is, as I understand it, obviously, we all know what a public way is. But then there's also such a thing as a private way with a public right of, with a public right of access. It's not really an easement. Because the only distinction between the two is that once the public has this right-of-way, it's who has the obligation to maintain it. So it can't be abandoned by the owner, oh, not by the former owners, really. But they have the obligation to maintain it. And then you have an easement. Which this is, I don't know. I just know it's not a public way.
Has anybody ever challenged or run afoul of an easement-deed agreement? Where all that we're talking about is... So in essence, let me continue and I'll come back to that for a minute. You know, as I said, it's unfortunate the garage is there. The garage was noted to be constructed more than 10 years ago. So under chapter 48, section seven, 10-year period within 10 years from the date of the structures were erected, then the structures shall then be deemed for zoning purposes to be legally non-conforming structures. If I'm saying enforcement because it's over the property line, but is a legally non-conforming structure at that point. So to that end, the issues of what is presented by the applicant for the layout and design of the home, the presentation and of use of a, of a existing non-conforming structure is what we're assessing this application on. Is that somewhat clear?
Yep.
So there are some unfortunate things behind us, but in terms of where we are today, this is where we stand with a legally non-conforming structure. Okay. So that said, then the next criteria for which your application proposed project for the pre-existing non-conforming structure is that, you know, you have the right to, by the ordinance or by law, that such a change, extension, or alteration, you may do something to it, shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. So that's the criteria which it comes down to, of which this is judged by. So lots of different things, but at the end, end of the day, does this change the neighborhood? You did make a presentation about the neighborhood. Some of it is, is, I think, pertinent to take into account. Some of it, I think, is maybe overstated. I wouldn't take the front yard setbacks to be equal to side yard setbacks. Front yard setbacks are a different dimension and also have a different requirement above the required, or having a nearer lot line in order to create some consistency. So that, and that encroachment of a front yard setback is dealt with within dealing and facing a public way. The part above the side yard setback shows that there are some properties and without measurements, I'm not quite sure what, what all the exasperations, but I'll take your red lines to show that there are some in the neighborhood that are not meeting the side yard setbacks. The dimensional requirements that you had of the 38 feet and 120 feet is interesting, but I would think it's actually adverse because the idea is that you're not from the center of where you're putting the addition to your neighbors. It's really where your house is located against your lot line and where the neighbor's house is located against the lot line. And with that, you're not 38 feet from the neighbor's structure. Technically, you are, but you're how far away from their rights to build up to their side yard setback? Should the neighbor try to improve their house and their property within their rights? And have you then encroached on their ability and their rights on their property because of your non-conforming issue in which you would make the, your project would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? Because you're affecting neighbors.
Our, the reason I showed the distances from the addition is because the board's review is whether or not the addition will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The fact that this, our, the fact that this, the fact that this part of the house is closer to them has nothing to do with whether this addition, right here, is going to be significantly more detrimental to them. So what I wanted to show is that the addition is pretty far away from all of our neighbors. And as far as whether we expand this here, this up, has no bearing on their ability to build to the 10-foot setback line. It just doesn't. Where, and again, as you've said, this is pre-existing non-conforming. And so if we don't look, that this is already detrimental and so we won't let you change it because we're not in the encroachment, we're within our law.
You're, this...
I, you know, I, again, we're not, we're not arguing whether the house is more detrimental. The question is whether this addition will create a detrimental impact on the neighbors. 545 feet on the back of this garage, which is going to effectively raise the height of this building to 21 feet, some 14 feet below the allowed height of 35 feet. I honestly feel but for the fact that we had all these other circumstantial questions and issues raised about the bad acts of the prior owners and, you know, the alleged bad acts of my client, which we've proven were not in fact true. If I came in and said, all we're doing is improve, you know, upward extension, we're not expanding the encroachment, we're going to pull it back, I just can't figure out where we're getting a detrimental impact on anyone.
You have an existing non-conforming structure that you want to alter.
Correct.
The point is that substantially more detrimental is, is building over the non-conforming setback. I mean, you're...
But it's not deemed to be an expansion of the non-conformity because it's an upward extension. Otherwise, we would need a variance here.
Correct, so you're seeking a finding for that. And that's what's being discussed, of whether that's more detrimental to the neighborhood, which is in keeping in whole all the parcels and structures that exist there. And I think that it's substantially more detrimental of an upward extension that, that solidifies the non-conformity to a more permanent status going forward, which is a detriment to the neighborhood for others that come along and want rights in which they're, they have rights to develop their property to, you know, to meet the bylaws.
If that's the optical standard, then the board would have the right to never allow anyone to do anything that would exasperate a non-conformity.
True.
So why are we different? Can we go back to the criteria? Eric, I really want to bring us back to your law, your law. At the bottom line is whether or not this addition is going to be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. And as I've learned, this board likes to look at the, whether or not our existing non-conformity is actually something we also see in the neighborhood. Because clearly, if we were the only house in the neighborhood with this non-conformity and we were trying to change it, then you could say, well, you know, obviously, that's a significant detriment to the, to the neighborhood because you're, you're the one and only. Even if you don't count the front yard setbacks that are violated all around us, I hope you notice that the entirety of the five houses to one side all have non-conforming side yard setbacks. And, you know, there's another 10 houses in that small group. Nearly every house in Plum Island has a side and a setback problem. But the question is, will we be, we're not exasperating that non-conformity. The building inspector makes that call. We're not creating any new conformities. Regardless of what people are arguing, we're not increasing bedrooms in the home. The structure meets all of your rules and regulations, the addition. By significant measure, we're barely 16% far, our height is 21 feet.
It doesn't meet the side yard setback. Just saying, you can't say all.
Well, I, I mean, it's... But that side, that something is pre-existing non-conforming.
I know.
And we're not changing it or exasperating it. So we're not changing that.
Just pointing out that it doesn't meet all.
But this is the most important part of your bylaw. Someone needs to tell me how this 540-square-foot addition is going to build entirely over our lot, although, you know, within the setback, to a neighbor that's 38 feet away, how's that going to affect public health and safety? How's that going to impact the ability to flee from fire, flood, or panic? How are we affecting the light or air that gets to those properties? We're not overcrowding our undue concentration of population, four bedrooms, still four bedrooms. We're, I just can't see where there's a significant detrimental impact on the neighborhood from this addition.
I guess my concern, and I think I voiced that before, was the fact that it is a two-structure, it is two different structures. Not with a common wall. And it has been in the past rented out as two separate apartments, a house and an apartment.
Right, but not by us. And we're taking the kitchenette out, and they're taking the door out.
So if Mr. Ward moves and there's a, there's a new owner in there, by right, he sees this new apartment and...
Excuse me, it's not an apartment, it's a bedroom. There'll be no kitchen.
It's a kitchen, it's a bathroom.
No, there's no kitchen.
There is a kitchen right now, isn't there? A kitchenette.
And we told, that's part of, we're pulling, ripping that all up.
I think even if the kitchenette comes out, though, you can still Airbnb this without a kitchenette and have...
See, guys, I'm going to give him a permit because he might do something illegal.
We're just, we're talking about the other, we're talking...
Or anyone.
All sides here, right? So technically, you could use that for a bedroom on the first floor and a bedroom on the second floor. That's, I mean...
Yeah, about as equal as you could use a bathroom as a bedroom. There's a giant stairway in the middle of the room.
No, the living room, the living room could be a bedroom, right? And then the bedroom upstairs could be one.
Everyone's living room could be used as a bedroom. Everyone's den could be used as a bedroom. I mean, you're just, you're, you guys are saying you don't want to grant this because someone down the road might do something illegal.
No, that was a response to the kitchen. I don't think we're questioning the kitchen.
So, as I said before, unfortunately, this addition that doesn't meet the bylaws at the time it was built is there, it's been there. It is deemed a legal, pre-existing, non-conforming structure. We are assessing the application for which the applicant has given us drawings for the proposed plan. And so we take that with all honesty. If there are concerns, and we do have concerns of, and those are concerns, that just because you say you're going to do something, or anybody says they're going to do something, that if it looks different, or, and that's what all the bylaws and building codes are supposed to be guarding against, is not only what you want to do with it, but what the next person is going to do with it to make sure that everybody is at equal standing and not only you, but the public that may use this, this structure that comes into it is also safe because it meets all the building codes and bylaws. So that's what we're taking it on face value. The one substantially more detrimental is building on a property line. In my purview, is a non-starter for being substantially more detrimental because you are blocking light and air and rights to a neighbor's property and taking away the abilities. And we can talk about fire, separation, distances. You now negated their ability to be, if they build up to the line, they would have to move back two feet to, in order to be within compliance. And so your non-conformity is impinging on the neighbor's rights. And there's no, you moved your addition back, but you haven't done anything to your building to effectively correct that issue or to relieve the issue that you're imposing upon your neighbor. And so imposing upon an issue upon a neighbor is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Well, with all due respect, I don't agree with that at all because the existing non-conformance, as you've said yourself, is deemed pre-existing, non-conforming, all right?
That's great.
And we don't have to, you know, there's nothing in your bylaw that says that you can't add on to that and not be significantly more detrimental, but that you have to pull that encroachment back.
No.
Nowhere does it say that.
It says that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood.
Well, but if our non-conforming structure is already a foot over the line, how is building two feet back onto our property more detrimental than the piece that's already a foot over?
Because then you give the ability to correct it in the future, I guess, was something I was thinking about.
My attitude, my answer would be that you're, let me back up a little. I can't find those bullet points down there for the criteria. The criteria that I found in our section of special apartments, where, what the chairman said, and that's where I'm hanging my hat on, that by exacerbating the non-conforming status, you are becoming more, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, which is the wording that I find in our definition of special apartment.
How are we exasperating the non-conformity? It's at 1.2 feet, it's at 19... No, but I mean, there's not...
You're doing it 545 square foot times on a mathematical answer.
Yeah, I guess if you were renovating it, you were changing it.
So you're saying that anytime anyone comes in here and, you know, they've got a non-conformity, say they're only five feet off, and they want to go out, that you would never grant that? That you could never grant that? Because that's automatically...
I'd say I'd look at it on a case-by-case basis as we have tried to the...
So how is the fact that that other house is 38 feet away? How does that not, you know, how, what are we exasperating about the setback?
Mr. Duchesne, how many properties are there that are built over the property line in this neighborhood?
In this neighborhood?
Yeah.
I know of at least one. You know, based on my review, that one right there, that shows the house over actually in the right of way.
In the front yard setback.
Yeah. And, and I, you know, again, I, I, I don't know, you know, I didn't, you know, some of these show the house on the line, you know, you can't...
This one's on.
You can't tell if it's a foot or not. But the point is, that the existing nonconformity of being over, we're suggesting that we will build our setback, our building, on our property, so we're not exasperating that, you know, because you keep asking, how many are over the line? We're not exasperating the fact that this building is over the line. We're not. Yeah, and that neighbor, by the way, that we're all concerned about, provided us a letter of support. So, you know, with respect to whether we're impinging on their rights, that, that neighbor's fine with what we're doing.
Their rights, the future rights of, of the neighborhood is what...
Well, we're, we're all talking about today's rights, what my client's rights are and what their rights are. And the other question I have, sir, is, you keep saying that by doing that, we somehow prevent these people from moving, you know, building up to their 10-foot side yard setback. The truth is, if you measured, that even with being one, or if you, you measure from where we're doing our addition, there is still the right of way, which I believe is 10 or 20 feet wide. So if you count that 20 feet, or 10, let's see, call it 10 feet, and they build to within 10 feet of the line, there will be a resulting 20-plus feet between the homes, which is what your bylaws require anyway. So we're never going to impact their ability to build to their 10-foot, and they're not going to find themselves in a situation where their new addition, which is at the 10-foot line, is closer than 20 feet to our addition. Because of that right of way. There'll be 20, there'll be at least 10 feet separate, 20 feet separation between the two structures at all times. If we want to talk about separation between structures in this neighborhood, look at what's happening here, 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 here. Even here, and across the street. And here.
I don't think those red lines on that map are correct. The separation between my neighbor is great, on both sides.
This is a map that we received from the town. And, uh...
The house...
I'm not going to waste my breath.
So, on the survey that you provided, the, the public way is only 10 feet.
Okay, so that's 10 feet. Our addition's going to be inside our property? We can't be penalized for the pre-existing nonconformity. The question is whether the addition will be substantially more detrimental. So with us pulling it in two feet, by the width of the roadway, and the fact that the neighbor will have a side yard setback of 10 feet, that guarantees that there will always be 20 feet, which is what the bylaw requires between homes.
Yeah, I guess the struggle here is that the, the nonconformity is so gross in what it, it is and what it does, that the, the pre-existing nonconformity and your, your ability to use that, then, and you're saying, okay, so we have the right, we just have the right to keep, to keep building, and in the judgment or consideration of what we're discussing here, is that in doing so, it, it appears that it would be substantially more detrimental, because you're, you're, you are building on a, on a nonconformity that makes it more permanent and is, is on the property line. And we have had those situations, not that we're using precedents, but to have discussions where people have said, I have a near property line, and we've asked, or proposed, or recommended that it would be more favorable if the, if that existing line was not used, but it was brought back to be made more conforming. So is, is there any more relief that can be given to, to, to not be right on the property line, to make something more permanent, that whether it's, it's now legally pre-existing nonconforming, but actually improves first the intent of the zoning, and therefore would be a, a betterment to the neighborhood, as opposed to a continuation of an exacerbation of the neighborhood? That, that's, that's how I'm, I'm viewing it and reading it, and, and understand that it's, that the, the, just the judgment of substantially more detrimental lies within the board's opinion, and it does come down to the overall, applied against the overall condition of the neighborhood.
Well, I, I, you know, I, when you ask, is there anything else we could do to, to eliminate, or, you know, not exasperate the existing nonconformity, first of all, as I've said probably too many times, under your bylaws, we're not exasperating the nonconformity in an upward extension. That's just not the way the bylaws are applied or written. If you're suggesting, could we cut the corner of the garage off, that, that, you know, impede so that at least we get our entire building onto the lot? I, I could certainly see where doing that would definitely, I mean, we'd have to take the garage down, to be honest. And then, once we do that, then there's no question that, you know, at that point, we're, we're better off just taking the entire structure down and rebuilding it, you know, close in the center of the lot, 35 feet high, and huge, and big, and everything else.
And, and safe.
If that's what the neighbors want, you know, that's what might happen. But I, I, I can't offer, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, can't offer anything else. I don't know what else we could do, but what we've already done, and that is asked, or suggested, we would pull the, we would pull the addition in, so that the addition is at least completely within the boundaries of my, my client's property. We can't, we cannot move the garage, we can't rip the garage down to pull that corner out. I mean, I don't think structurally, we could just cut it off. I don't know how that would work, but I don't think it can be done. I, I, I think we've proposed an addition that, with all due respect, just is not going to be found to be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. I, I, I mean, I really don't think we're going to impair light and air.
Yeah, I, I do think that is part of what we're saying, is that, that upward extension increases the shadows on neighboring properties. You know, we're not going to debate airflow, but...
Yeah, but our bylaws, our bylaws say that we have, we, we have to be 10 feet from our side yard line, so that in essence, properties are considered, are generally found to be a minimum of 20 feet apart. And we just showed you that, in essence, with pulling that addition in onto the property, there will be at a minimum 20 feet of space between the houses. So how is our house being 20 feet apart considered being detrimental to air and, and light, when the bylaws allow structures to be built within 20 feet of each other?
Because you're building on the property line, you're building over the property line. You're, 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 you're not, you're not meeting the setbacks, you're not giving your neighbor, and you're not giving the right of way to, the means to that light and air, which, which the original setback, the unfortunate two-story garage, was built. You know, there were bylaws, and it, it's just that this is a, you know, it's, you have a very problematic house, there's a lot of issues to it, unfortunately. It's not straightforward. And in keeping with the Plum Island and the bylaws, and trying to make sure that properties are meeting the intent of the bylaws, so that all properties are equal, and it's, and all rights are, are fair, we're just, we're going over it, and because you have all these issues, we're, we're, you know, we need to scrutinize it.
But we're not going over onto a public way. We're going onto a right of way that my client has legal rights, you know, ownership.
Not to build on. Can you build on the right of way? Can you show me that statute?
No, I'm not suggesting, we're not asking to build on the right of way. That's a pre-existing situation, which my client had nothing to do with, by the way. Nothing to do with. Our proposed addition is now entirely within our property.
Not meeting the setback line.
True.
True. Yep, is there any more additional?
Uh, just quickly, I just wanted to, reinforcing the points and questions you're asking. The purpose, as stated in the first paragraph of the PIOD provisions, the last stated purpose is to limit the expansion of nonconforming, single and two-family structures, so as to prevent the exacerbation of existing problems with density and intensity abuse. The exacerbation issue that the building inspector was reviewing was whether or not the exacerbation is so bad as to require a variance, and he said it wasn't. But with respect to the exacerbation in the context of your review criteria, that's up to you to determine. So you're not stuck with the building inspector's view as to whether there was an exacerbation or not. And the final point I just want to make is, right behind the special permit criteria, where it's, where it lays out the substantially more detrimental criteria, that next sentence there reinforces the concerns you're expressing about not allowing expansions in close proximity to the property lines and, and neighbors, and it also raises the next issue, which I mentioned before, that you're not focused on, and that maybe that's fine, but that next sentence is where it says that the board cannot allow renovations that would add bedrooms in excess of the three that are provided for in the PIOD provisions. So that, even, even if you were to find that this expansion didn't, it wasn't more substantially more detrimental, you could deny it based solely on the fact that it's adding a bedroom. They specifically are touting this expansion as a bedroom expansion. So that's adding a bedroom, because the one that's there now is illegal. Okay, that's up to...
Yeah, I, I guess in terms of that determination, that would have to come from the building inspector is, is deeming. I mean, for the information presented to us on the accessors card, it appears that they've recognized it in the house, right or wrong, but the building inspector would have to rule on, on that and that, that use. That's his enforcement.
Yeah, if the building inspector...
Well, it would have to be a single-family house, and it doesn't have to be...
The building inspector, if the building inspector has been out to view this home, and specifically this bedroom, and if in writing this determination letter, the building inspector made it clear to me, and we made it clear to him what we were seeking to do, relocate the bedroom, if he thought we had an illegal bedroom, or if he thought this constituted an addition of a bedroom, would he have not said that we needed a next, another special permit or a variance? His determination was that, in order to do what we were proposing, it was clear what we were doing, that we needed a special permit for an upward extension. So, I mean, we've got to, at some point, rely on the building inspector to make these determinations, if this is a legal one-family, or if it's an illegal two-family. He would have made note of that in his determination letter.
Well, I disagree with that.
Hang on a second. Hang on a second. We, yes, and we, we can, you can feel the building inspector's decision, and we can feel his decision or his direction as well.
I understand.
So we have that right to do that.
Okay.
You know, in, in reading from chapter 40A, section 6, and then reading from the PIOD 97-4D Plum Island, the purpose, you know, you are limited to the expansion of nonconforming single-two-family structures, so as not to prevent the exacerbation of existing problems and density. And we, we see the existing problem, that this, this structure, even if it's legally nonconforming, and nobody can enforce the removal of it, you're exacerbating that problem of the density of, of use by adding on to it. And any addition is deemed to be, you know, exasperating the problem.
Mr. Chairman, I, there's nothing more I can offer in terms of, of, of remedy of the past sins of the owners, and we cannot, you know, feasibly suggest that we can cut this corner of this building off. We've done everything we can to pull that in, so that it's on our property only, and not exasperating that encroachment over the line in any way. I presented the evidence where I feel that, based on your bylaws, that what we're, what the conditions that we suffer from are, are consistent throughout the neighborhood, and that this addition, and again, we're only here about the addition, that the addition of this will not be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. With all due respect, I've provided all the information I can, and I guess the board needs to decide what, you know, what they want to do, because we, we do, and again, where I have nothing more to present or offer, I would suggest that, you know, it's to the boards, you know, it's, it's up to the board now to make a decision. I, I just don't know what else I can do.
Well, I, I think we're saying that there's, you know, exacerbation of existing problem, and that the creativity of putting a, a bedroom somewhere else, or an extension somewhere else, could happen. As you said, you could build up to 35 feet, be creative. I think what we're saying is that the side yard setback and the exasperation of building over the property line and any upward extension is a continuation of that problem, which we find detrimental to the neighborhood, to the neighborhood, and specifically to the neighbors. And, you know, there were lots of previous circumstances that we worked through, that I would agree that a lot of them are cleared because of the pre-existing non, the now pre-existing nonconformity. But all, all those issues on this property create, create the issue, and create the problem, and, and the upward extension exasperates that. Exasperates that by, by increasing it upward, by making it more permanent in terms of, of the rest. And I, I still think we have problems in, in terms of a motion that would be, be favorable at the moment as it's presented.
I, I understand. All, all we can do is present the information we have and what we're requesting, and proof that, you know, in our position, we don't feel it's, it's detrimental, significantly detrimental, and good. I respect the board's right to, you know, not necessarily agree with me on all some points, but at this point, I, unlike perhaps past situations where we had flexibility to move this around, or pull it in, or do, we, we really don't. I mean, this is the only way to, to make that, create that bedroom and on the, which, by the way, the, the garage is one-story currently. I, I know you, you may have misspoke, but it was one-story, and, and we are proposing to add this second bedroom up, so. I, I do appreciate the board's consideration, but I, I, again, I unfortunately have nothing more to offer.
Usually people will fill in their designs on their architect, but, you know, there is space over that entire roof to turn the bedroom from the back and, and figure out a way to not extend on the property line.
Hold on, we're checking our plans. Mr. Chairman, if perhaps maybe we could, maybe take a five-minute recess, so I could control of my client outside?
Sure. Can we just close out? Anybody that had any comments in the back?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
No, no, I just want to make sure that people that had a thought aren't sitting forever and losing their thought. Is there anybody in the audience that would add a comment to the discussion that we're currently having, not repeating anything, but adding?
I just want to say that pulling the addition in, that they're stating, would not be possible structural, without having to put from... would not be possible structure without having to put a brand-new structure on it and carry it along with that second floor. It's not legitimate plan. Because it's not possible, it's not possible to make the building off the foundation that's there anyway, but you can't drive it in.
Right, but what, what we're after in terms of meeting the intent of the bylaw, if, if should that somehow come to be, then there, there still is the building inspector and building codes that must, must be met. And there is the evaluation of the construction that must be met. And those, those are all conditions.
So you still have legitimate points. I mean, you got to...
Correct.
Correct, and if, if, we, we ask routinely that for some changes, even minor changes, that the, a decision, if made and voted on, has a condition that any alterations or any changes whatsoever that are resubmitted for the review of the board. So, because some people come to us with very suspect beginning plans to feel things out, some people come with very final ideas. So we do have conditions to safeguard against that.
What's the current sign look like? What are you proposing?
I'm just saying that if, if...
He's studying on his architect.
So, you know, we're talking about...
He's changed to his architect.
Building this. If you were to somehow build that, then you're, you're not on setback. You've got that. I don't know, I don't know what you guys think, but I'm just wondering.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If I might, just maybe for a further clarification on your position and the position of the board, is the, the fact that we are, in your minds, exasperating the, the situation by building within the 10-foot setback, is that the driving factor here to your consideration that, you know, that we're going to be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood? In other words, if there were some way to design this addition so that the addition in its entirety was 10 feet off that side yard line, would the board feel otherwise with respect to whether or not this is significantly more detrimental? Now, again, we still have the issue, and again, it's not an issue for you, but it will be an issue for my client to go now, figure out if this can be done architecturally. And of course, anything can be done. The question will, can it be done on this garage without taking the whole garage down? Because we don't disagree with the fact that if we have to take this entire garage down to do this, we're clearly going to run afoul of the 50% rule. We have concluded, and again, based on our understanding of the foundation and whatnot, that the addition we've proposed could be had without, you know, having to rip things down and build new foundations. So that's why we're confident that, you know, we're still going to be within the 50% rule. But without knowing, you know, without getting the design done and without then going over that with the building inspector, we have no way of knowing whether we're going to run afoul of that. And while my client's willing to run that risk, you know, the question is, are we willing to run the time and expense to go redesign this thing so it's 10 feet off, only to have the board say, "Well, even though you're now 10 feet off with your addition, we still think you're exasperating a bad situation"?
So we're discussing it. We haven't closed the public hearing. We haven't discussed it and come to any conclusion from the board. I'm expressing my opinion, whether, whether they agree with me or not. At the moment, we haven't quite all come to that agreement. I think what I'm suggesting, if there was a way to pull it back so that the addition was 10 feet off the property line, then that addition would be no more detrimental than if there was no structure currently on the site and you were building it and you were 10 feet back, you would not be exacerbating or creating any problems or any approachment. So, understanding, again, the litany of things of unfortunate past history of, of the house, seemingly if you presented an addition that was totally all in keeping and didn't exacerbate a problem of being over on or within that setback, would, and it worked for you, obviously, would seemingly be more favorable to look at than, than something that exacerbates and extends a problematic structure.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Any other board members have thought in that regard?
Well, we could, I don't know, are we, or is there some, maybe similar agreement? I'd like to either keep the public hearing open and not close it at the moment. Is there any more discussion, Jack, from your point of view?
I just want to make sure that we're, we're sticking with the PIOD, which has limited the expansion of nonconforming, single and two-family structures so as to prevent the exacerbation of existing problems. Sounds like that's what we're, we're trying to get. If he could get, I guess I'd be more inclined to agree with if the entire addition was, you know, was 12 feet to what's off the encroachment on one corner or something, whatever the numbers are, then I think you've got a better chance of arguing you're not exacerbating the existing problems. Right now, I think it's kind of no reason that you are.
I, I agree, Jack.
I wasn't voting, I was on my own.
I know, but you're still here, and you're still in the thing, and you're still on the board. Everyone's waiting for it.
I would agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, in light of where we are in the hour, my client would respectfully ask that you continue the hearing to give us an opportunity to go back and see if there's anything we can do.
Okay, I think...
Could you perhaps meet with our neighbors' council to figure out what we could do to make that comfortable as well?
That would certainly be great and, you know, more straightforward than if you could present and argue that you're not, you're not, you're not extending the existing problem, exacerbating for the neighborhood, and you're making an improvement that is more permanent. And it, it would be in right in keeping, if it was a brand-new structure on site, it might be hard to argue against it.
Thank you. So we'd ask for a continue.
All right, is there a motion for continuance?
I'm making a motion to continue the meeting until February 16th. I think that's our next meeting at 7:30.
So it is 16, just a little check, at 7:30. Yes, is there a second? A second, exactly. All those in favor? Aye. All right, you have your continuance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, appreciate your efforts.
Appreciate the audience's time.
Do you have a minute?
It's driving, it's getting a little cold out there.
Yeah, we got a little much.
They're not all the same, which is what makes them...
Oh, do we need to continue the other...
Yeah, yeah, I gotta read that.
I lose that. So, the meeting's not over yet. Public hearing continues. William Goldin, Six Yard Way, the applicant. Salvatore, oh, sorry, I got the wrong one. I got so many.
Just Salo, I think.
That's last month.
Just saying that Chrissy's away.
Yeah. Salvatore Andrew Ressell, 16 Green Street. The applicants are requesting a special permit for relief, relief of Section 9710D to see the tax accessory apartment of Newbury zoning laws. Any other permit relief as may be required under the town of Newbury's zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use project. In order to renovate the existing detached garage on the lots converted into an in-law apartment on the base, on the property located at 16 Green, Newbury, Mass., Assessor's Matt U09, Lot 72. They've asked for a continued hearing for February 16th at 7:30.
All right, is there a motion?
A motion to accept.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion back.
We'll keep you busy next meeting. Hopefully with a little less flair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chrissy, is there a motion to close the meeting?
Make a motion to close the meeting.
I was holding second.
My second?
Second, Jack, second. All those in favor?
Aye.